And we'll excuse Commissioner Elmer. Don't know if he'll make it here tonight, so. I'm gonna start it, go to item number two, which is consent approval of planning commission minutes from October 11th, 2023. Everyone have an opportunity to review those?
Oh my God, motion that we approve the last month's meetings, minutes, the planning commission meeting September 13th, 2023.
September, it should be October.
Oh, so September, aren't we?
October 11th. Oh, you're reading the minutes from the last item. So the last, well, we did those ones.
I restate then that we should approve the minutes, make that motion that we should approve staff minutes from October 31st, 2023.
I'll second the motion and just state that the, that the date is October 11th, 2023.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was all of us. So now it's our post. That is approved. That moves us to agenda item number three, which is discussion action recommend to approve site plan amendment for expansion of Walmart pickup and delivery area within the Harrisville retail subdivision located at 534 North Harrisville Road. Okay, so our applicant is attending via Zoom and so we'll start with the staff memo. Jimmy, do you want to go over the history list?
Good evening, Commissioners. So we received an application September 12th for Walmart for a site plan amendment. We did go over the amendments at our October project management meeting and there were no planning or engineering concerns out of that meeting. So we forwarded our recommendation for approval to this body for tonight's meeting. The applicant is joining us online via Zoom and we can share the screen here and show the
Thank you.
actual site. And this is a comparison of the existing section. This is the west, southwest corner of the building. Down at Walmart, I think we're all familiar with that. This area here is currently concrete. And they are proposing this addition to store their online orders until people come to pick up. And then they've identified the parking here on the west side as pickup parking for those that are online ordering. And then they've identified some additional parking down here for more pickup orders. And there again are no comments from concerns from the planning side of things or the engineering side of things. This is more of a building permit and they have submitted their building permit. The building official has done a preliminary look at that, but the site plan amendment needs to be approved before any technical thing is conducted. Do you have questions for the applicant? He's here.
Good evening, Jeff. Is there anything that you'd like to add to what's already been said?
Um, no. Good evening. My name is Jeff Solmson with Galloway. Pretty much covered everything there. Like I said, it's about a 4,000 square foot expansion on the quarter there. The number of parking stalls will still meet code after it's all said and done. And this has no effect on any existing utilities or easements in the area. It's, as I said, it's pretty straightforward. And no landscaping effect, no utilities, just an addition onto the building to expand the online pickup presence. It's not adding any additional retail floor to this. It's more of a storage space for online pickup orders, but pretty much covered. But if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, so this, this is, so is it, is it a drive-through or do you have to park and come in to get these?
Or park and call and deliver to you?
And bring it out to you? Is that how, how it's working? Okay.
Yeah, if it's all through COVID, you come and you park in one of the stalls and where I used to park is where the building is going to be. And then there's a sign that says, call this number to check in. So you're there, name your stall, and then they come out of the doors and load your car for you.
Oh, right on.
It's just getting a lot bigger than it has been before.
Okay.
So my favorite parking spots will be gone both because I tend to park in the pickup area when I'm not feeling big up to. But that's okay. I can find another place.
Parking last week.
My wife's favorite spot was in the gas station.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't have any major concerns on this one, but I noticed the packet had a lot of other modifications to the building. They're redoing all their signs and things too.
There were some signs identified with the
Yeah, are they making changes?
They're, they're updating their signage. There weren't any changes to the locations of the signs. They're just putting new signs on.
Okay.
That would just, that's mainly a making sure that they meet the building code for that.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. Sounds like it's been reviewed thoroughly and I think based on what's been said, I'm certainly happy to extend a motion to approve the site plan amendment for the expansion of Walmart pickup and delivery area within the Harrisville retail subdivision located at 534 North Harrisville Road.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
So do you mind amending that motion to include subject to compliance of the Harrisville Municipal Code?
Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, I amend my motion initially, my initial motion to include all codes, city codes, municipal code, that's the word I was looking for. It just wasn't coming for a second there.
Amended motion.
Second, not amended motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jenny.
That was all of us. Motion passes. Kind of very good. Is there anything else they need to know?
Thanks, Jeff.
Passing? Is there a waiting period or anything with this?
No waiting period. Uh, we'll go ahead and issue a notice of action after this meeting and then you, this building permit is already in our portal. So our building official will now be able to start on his review and let you know when that's ready.
Okay, perfect. Alright, that moves us on to item number four.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, which is discussion action recommend to approve a conditional use permit number 142, which is an application for a preschool slash childcare business located at approximately 2365 North 500 West. Side yours, yes. Would you mind coming up and telling us a little more about what you're planning to do here?
Yes, well, the home, I've lived here for about a year and a half. We moved from Colorado and we live in a cul-de-sac right near Majestic Elementary. And the home I bought used to be a preschool, like maybe 10 years ago, I think. Um, so it's got a preschool setup in the basement. It's got a little kitchenette and a small bathroom and a little drinking fountain. So it's set up and I've been working with the childcare division also. They're coming, I think my inspection's tomorrow. So, um, my goal is to just provide preschool services and childcare services, um, out of the basement area.
And the times for preschool and childcare don't overlap or are you planning on having them?
Oh, so like the preschool, no, they won't overlap. So the preschool hours would be separate from any like drop-in childcare or other like educational, um, you know, like small groups in art class or, uh, you know, stuff like that.
And what hours of operation are you looking at?
So it would be during the school year, um, nine to 12:30, three days a week. Um, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday is the plan for now. And, um, I may provide like, you know, some between 12:30 and 3 o'clock, kind of some after-school options for like an hourly rate if they want to leave their, you know, leave their child extra.
Section then?
Right, mm-hmm. Yeah.
Gotcha. Interesting. So other than, other than the daycare during the school year, the painting and other things like that would be in addition to or outside of?
Well, I don't plan on doing much more than just the, you know, during the school year. I have four kids of my own also. So, um, my main focus is just like the preschool and then maybe some hours of care in between before kids let out of elementary school. Um, in the summer, if I did do any, you know, summer camp type things, it would be maybe once or twice. It's, I don't really have a consistent plan of, you know, every week in the summer I'm gonna do a, it, it would probably just be like a, you know, offer a two-day summer camp type thing where, you know, that type of a thing.
So how many people easily would you put in that?
Um, for the preschool, I'm allowed to have up to 12 with just myself. And that I don't ever plan on having more children than that amount. If I do, I have, um, I do plan to have about two substitute teachers. My sister lives in Far West. And so like she's going, like if I need a substitute, they're going to be, you know, background checked under my childcare license.
They wouldn't be showing up every day or?
No, no.
I was curious as to how that would work.
So tell us, um, how, how are you planning to do like the parking and the drop-off and stuff like that?
So in the cul-de-sac, there is, um, I submitted like a drawing, but it's got a pretty long neck, the cul-de-sac does. And then, um, there's actually a, should have been a, anyway. This area, so there's a home right here, home right here, then this is my lot. It's about point six, seven acres, I think. And then there's two homes here, but these homes both, there's one driveway here, there are driveways over here. Um, but there's, this is longer and actual when it's to scale. So then, um, my driveway, I, I mean, and I plan to be very clear with the students, the families of what the options are, you know, as far as parking goes. And I've, I mean, I've got four kids, so I've been through a lot of, and my youngest starts kindergarten next year. So, I mean, I've been through a lot of preschool drop-off scenarios, right? So, um, I mean, definitely like the gate to the preschool is right here. So I would just meet families here. They would drop them off and then I'll have the kids line up behind the fence right here. Um, and then I've talked to both of these families. They're, you know, they're okay. They're supportive of it. So I would just, and then there's also a spot to park right here and right here, like on my
In between the two driveways.
Right, yeah. So the, and then like, like I said, there's parking right here and then most, the driveway to this home is right here. So, I mean, there is plenty of.
Yeah, and it's only temporary, so it's just.
Right. Oh, and yeah, and it would just be, you know, the drop-off window. So, and only three days a week. And it would be after the rush of the elementary school, so.
Well, that sounds really interesting.
We're here to, I think our code allows you to go early here, which will cause issues with going and buying this.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, within the window, so that's great. I have any other questions? I know Mark and Holly are great people.
What, what percentage of the house is used for the preschool? Is it half the basement, the whole basement?
So, well, this is the whole basement area. So this, uh, I'm gonna use this storage room here for the preschool area. Um, we may use there, we may use this area over here if I'm going to be needing a screen for something, but, or like a reading area over here. So this area actually may be used with the preschool area. These are separate bedrooms and so there's gonna be a gate right here though. The childcare, oh, sorry, the childcare licensing will require that I have a gate right there. So, um.
Is there a quarter of your house, a third of your house?
Um, let's see, I meant, I meant.
Is it the same footprint upstairs?
Yes, except for that there's a third floor that's a, there's one big loft area that's another kind of family TV area. So it, this is, yes, this is basically the same.
Below the code, this part isn't a 25%.
25% first time.
Okay, so that is, so that is the code that it has to be.
Sounds like it's well.
Yeah, so your daycare could go outside the 25% in the code in 11, 10, 20C if you want to reference that. Um, but the preschool would be limited to the 25%. So if it's less than a quarter of your house, then you're good.
So a preschool has to be less than a quarter of your house?
25 or less, yeah.
25 or less, and then the daycare, what's the limits on that?
It doesn't have one in here, so you could expand on that.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I just wanted to make sure you met that.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to get percentages from.
Yeah, well, I meant to get it, I, I'm gonna get it measured, so just for, you know, tax purposes and stuff like that. I need to know the exact square footage of everything.
Right. And how many cars do these families coming in? Are they gonna fix all of the parking up when they come to drop people off or will there still be extra parking left over?
Well, it's going to be like a, from what I've experienced, not all families show up at the same time. You know, I'll probably have some cars waiting to drop off kids. I would say that some people will probably get there right about 8:50 or so. Um, but there is, you know, we've got a huge garage here too, so these will be, and I don't have any other drivers in my family, just my husband and I. So, um, they can pull up here if they want to not just drop off, if they want a minute, you know, they can park. You could probably fit four right here and then, so four, five, six, I mean, you could have six families at once dropping off. And then, um, like I said, I'm gonna definitely inform everybody that, so then if there's other people waiting, they would just wait like right here and then pull through. So usually, from what I've experienced, it's usually like a 10-minute process to drop off situation.
12 kids is gonna be less than 12 cars.
10, it's only gonna be 10 kids.
As you already said, you could have up to 12.
I can have up to 12.
Planning on 10 though, so.
Right, yeah, so I'm just planning on 10.
So that's plenty, okay. I just wanted to look through that one too. Unusual traffic patterns here. Mine is later than the school start time, 8:30.
So school starts at 8:35, um, but.
So you have 20 minutes after that, so you're still dropping off at school. It's gonna be pretty late, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's less than four hours a day per session, so that's good. You're already working on those state licensings, that.
I'm getting a Harrisville license.
Are there any?
Business licenses.
This is required before she can apply for a business license.
Are there any health building or fire code issues with the property that the city's aware of?
Not that we're aware of. The business license will require.
I've had the fire inspection already and then the kitchen inspection, is that what's coming tomorrow? All of a sudden now I'm like, wait, it's the kitchen, it's, it's the health department that's coming tomorrow. And then, um, I have to submit that I've at least applied for my business license to get the childcare license. And then they'll come out and do a separate childcare licensing inspection.
We want to have 50 hours anymore or just?
So it looked like in the initial description of it that you would have actually two sessions, one from 9:00 to noon and one from noon to 3:00.
Okay.
But you're saying that that, noon to 3:00 is just an optional.
Well, right, yes, yeah.
Optional?
Right, yeah, I don't plan to have, I had originally thought of doing an AM and a PM. That's kind of a traditional thing to do with preschools, but I'm just keeping it to the morning session.
That's good, yeah, that's good.
I don't have any other concerns. I just went through the code and I had sections even, then there's nothing.
I looked through it too clear because I have.
A drop-off zone in the cul-de-sac was my first concern.
It's a big, it's a big cul-de-sac.
It would have to be with five houses in it, so.
Yeah, I mean, my house is point six, seven acres. Yeah, it's, um, it's a big cul-de-sac.
So this is in the R120 zone, which is half acre lots or bigger.
Any other concerns or should we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit at 142, or conditional use permit 142 for preschool childcare business located approximately 2365 North 500 West for Holly Egan.
I'll second that motion.
Subject to the staff memo?
Subject to the staff memo.
And the municipal.
And the municipal code.
Now I'll second that motion. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, good. All of us.
So there is a 15-day appeal period that we have to wait until we can actually issue the conditional use permit. Okay. 15 days from now, you can come in and sign, enter into that conditional use agreement, sign it, and then you can apply for your business license through the city after that.
Okay, so will I be notified or just come in at 15 days?
At 15 days.
Okay. Business days or calendar days?
I believe it's calendar days.
Okay.
I, I think it's calendar days, so you should be good. So about the, so right after Thanksgiving?
Okay.
Will that appeal period will expire?
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Do I get to say or am I good to go?
Good to go.
Okay.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you.
And that brings us to agenda item number five, which is discussion action recommend to approve a letter of support for the rural community opportunities grant. Jenny, introduce the.
Hello, sorry.
Justin, you seem to be here to introduce it.
Yes, I'm actually gonna let Justin handle this one. He'll have more details on it.
I know this was the road for the city building.
Yes, so essentially we're looking into any grant opportunity we can with the city. Um, this is actually kind of a unique grant. Harrisville, our surrounding communities actually don't meet the eligibility requirements because there are over 10,000 residents.
So we're still rural enough?
We're still rural enough being under 10,000 in population. So Glenn, a fellow public works employee, is the one that's gone out and is writing this grant. But he actually came down with an illness, so he couldn't make, asked me to come in. But part of this grant is to have a committee that is kind of overseas and is informed of this grant. Well, we've decided the planning commission should be that committee.
That would be awesome.
So with that, we will keep you guys informed and up to date of what's going on. We may have a, a committee meeting. We can, we'll, we'll come and bring, bring in agenda items. You know, we won't hold a special meeting or anything like that. We'll bring in a agenda item and Glenn will be in contact with you guys if that's the case. So yeah, um, it's a $600,000 grant that we're asking for to help subsidize paying for the roadway that connects, uh, 89 to 750. The specialty about this grant is the fact that it has to impact, uh, future growth and development of business. Well, which that road actually helps us out a lot because it's what ties HHI in to not being lablocked. And now they've got everything out on 89, it's gonna be commercial. So we're showing, HHI has given us some, not guarantees, but some good ideas of businesses they're trying to focus on. Bring to that area, one definitely being a fuel station, gas station. So they've kind of helped us say, okay, these are what we're trying to bring into the city. This is how it's gonna impact us. This is, the, the state asked for a special return on investment. Kind of a synopsis of what we think will get back, you know, what sales tax revenue that these businesses will bring in. So we're working with our finance people right now doing that. I'm gonna have that grant submitted next week. I had very great meetings with the actual people that are on the panel for giving out that grant money. One was a previous resident of Harrisville and local to, oh, trade state communities, or trade city communities, I'm sorry. So she, uh, she's a big advocate for this. So we're really optimistic and hoping that it will go through. So yeah, we're just kind of asking you guys to be that committee and that body and.
I would be honored to be. How far does this grant going to go into putting the road in? What percentage of the project is it?
When we last did the estimate, the estimate was $3.3 million to do the road. So 600,000 is not a huge percentage, but any, anything else. Again, it's kind of where we're trying to do any funding help to.
It's a big percentage on our one, that's great.
Yeah, yeah.
But the state's not having to have us do an ROI on the entire road, just that portion of it?
Just, just what we, just a synopsis of what businesses we think we can bring in. And, and how it will impact and.
So they, they want to know how much of a bang for their life.
Yeah, because, because they directly deal with rural communities and wanna be able to say, hey, this is how we're helping our rural communities.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, that's, that sounds wonderful. Yeah, I'm honored to be asked to be on that, that's great.
And then you'll notice in the letter that's called out, the only thing I have to add is that we will encourage, they offer local business grants as well through the same economic opportunity grant program. And so part of our obligation is that we will notify any potential businesses that are gonna come in, that they can qualify or they can apply for that grant.
That's great as well.
That's outlined in the letter.
Yes, I think it's up to $6,000 per employee that the business will get and they can, they can spend that however they feel. Whether that's paid, some of that employee's wages, benefits, however.
By the help string.
That helps them bring in more employees and more incentive.
Do we know what kind of gas station there?
We, we've just heard that that corner would be a prime location for.
Mom would hit ever, with a drop station.
Especially with the light there at that.
Yeah, there will be a light there sometimes. Do you know how soon the room is starting?
Hopefully January of the 750 portion of it, that portion of 750. And then as we move forth with our phases of building on that property, we'll have the roadway in as we go. There's some unique features of a ditch that we've gotta get figured out.
So maybe the road in sections now?
Yes. And again, as funding kind of clears itself up, we will, there's a timeline on this. I think it's three years that, uh, once we get, receive the funding, that we need to expend those funds, so.
Don't you, okay, don't you think that that will take a little bit of pressure off of 750 both ways?
Oh, yes, that's, and that's part of what we're writing in the grant. Not only take pressure off of 750, but take pressure off like this morning.
The intersection.
At 9:30 for 45 minutes, people were stopped because the train was there. And there's no other way around.
And this will give them a way around the train?
This could possibly give them a way around the train.
The train was here before the roads.
Right.
That's their statement.
Oh, Adam, we love you in Pacific, that's why.
Yeah, that's their own statement. Every time you have a complaint about that, because I got tired of hearing that and just quit calling.
Yep.
Well, any other questions for the city here? Jenny, anything to add?
Justin covered that really well, this is a great opportunity for the city that we're hoping to take advantage of. We're working very diligently to find funds as well, anywhere we can.
Nice job.
Anything helps, especially if we can encourage the businesses with the same sort of grant.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
It will help the development a lot.
Any word on golf courses?
Let's get through this first. Do we need a motion to approve this?
Sorry, I'm just too excited about finding this stuff.
Do you want to make it, or I can make it this time?
Oh, I, I'm, I'll make a motion that we approve the letter with the amendments that Jenny talked about.
Those are already in the letter.
Oh, it's already in there now, okay, okay. Uh, a, a motion to approve the letter of support for the Royal Communities, rural, excuse me, Communities, uh, Opportunity Grant.
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That was all of us again. That gives us to public comments. If anyone wants to comment, this is your choice, your chance to say something. We have one member of the public in there online, if you'd like to say something, please do. If there's no public comment, we'll move on. To item number seven, which is commissioning staff follow-up, that Chad's been so eager to move to already.
Couldn't even wait.
So I'm gonna start there with the...
Sure, let's start there.
Well, I don't have a lot to report outside of there is increased interest in the project being sold. So I've met today even with a, a potential buyer, and so we are getting some information out there of what approvals have taken place and the status of the project as far as the city's side goes, and so we're hopeful that we'll see some movement on that.
Sure.
Or at least by spring, it, now that we're going into the winter months, it would be...
So it is their, their full and final intent to sell that rather than find, the financing to build it?
So I, we don't know specifics because we're not involved in, in the investment side of the development. All we know is what the developer tells us, which is that he last communicated that he was looking for a buyer. And then I was contacted today by someone who had interest.
Just you likewise, so they could know how far along we've...
Yep.
So what approvals have already taken place, and particularly their interest is always related to the UDOT approvals because that can be somewhat time-consuming on a development side.
Time-consuming on this one?
So, so that's the report that I have on that development.
Well, that's good news then.
The other, I think we briefly talked about it at the beginning, or even prior to meeting, starting, the Wasatch Park Regional Council meeting is on Monday, uh, the thirteenth, from four until six over at Far West, City Hall area, and so if you have interest in attending that to see their long-range plan, that's typically fairly interesting.
Trails and bikes, this time, it's optional for everybody, you don't have to be there, but it can be kind of... I'm planning on doing...
That's all the staff. Oh, we do have our city Christmas party on December seventh at six P M at the cabin, we'll be sending invitations out for that. So you can mark your calendars for that date. We also have our Christmas, Christmas events, Santa at the cabin will be the following night at the cabin. We'll be doing a parade again this year, if you were able to witness that or participate in that, last year that was a fun event. And then our police department's doing our Shop With A Hero that Saturday for the children that they have selected for that burger.
Do you have the cabinet, yeah?
Yes, we are, we'll send out an invitation for that.
What time is the, um, Christmas party on the seventh?
Six P M. And I believe that's all we have to report, if there's any, unless there's questions for staff.
Any other follow-up? I don't have any other. On that project there, that's just below twenty-one fifty North, just off of, um, seven fifty West, do we have any idea when they're gonna complete the road through that project, have we heard anything? I know they're...
The interior private road in the development?
Yeah.
They're building it in phases as, as the buildings go in, but...
I know they've got the four buildings that are various stages of completion, and I noticed they've already tarred part of it.
Yes, they have, they have to have access for residents to meet the fire code, so they have to have a hard surface before we can issue any occupancy to the units that are there, so they're doing it in phases, and particularly now with the weather turning. There won't be a lot of asphaltic happening until spring from this point on, unless we get some sixty-degree days again.
We don't see that?
We might, we might.
Maybe in January, I thought.
Just wondered what the progress will be.
Yeah, I don't have any other follow-up, so, can I have anything else, or should we adjourn?
I'm good, moving right now, thank you.
Let's be adjourned then, declare us adjourned.